Good evening, everybody. Good evening. This 80th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in a virtual meeting, before you speak, please state your name to be recognized and I will recognize you. Once I recognize you, please state your name, your district, and then begin talking. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Rabbi Silver from the Suburban Orthodox Congregation. Following invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Rabbi? Rabbi, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ashken.
Thank you.
It's a great privilege to be here with all of you today. Almighty God, we pray that you grant your wisdom to the men and women in the leadership of our great city as they work to care for our citizens, to advance the causes of goodness, human decency, and equality for all. Oh Lord, protect us from the ravages of this terrible disease, COVID-19, which has claimed so many lives-
Has joined the meeting.
...of tragedy and loss in its wake. Almighty God, please look after the doctors, nurses-
We can talk about this shortly.
...who put their lives at risk to heal the sick. Almighty God, you are the true healer of all flesh. Allow us to feel your blessing and providence in these difficult and challenging times for our city, our state, our nation, and the world. Grant the men and women of this chamber the capacity to follow in your footsteps, oh Lord, to bring safety, security, happiness, joy, and contentment to our citizens who turn to them for help and assistance. Almighty God, give the special men and women of this chamber the courage to stand up for truth, the strength to stand up to evil, and the belief in themselves to always do what is right. May your blessings be showered upon them, and may all their efforts meet with success. Almighty God, shower healing and prosperity on all mankind, and let us say, Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, thank you and thank you again, Rabbi. The next showcase speaker is Dr. Sonia Santalisis. Dr. Santalisis will provide us with an update on how Baltimore City Public Schools, how students during the COVID-19 crisis, Dr. Santalisis.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Let me know if my Wi-Fi-
A participant has joined the meeting.
But thank you, Council President, and thank you, members of the city council. We are, as Baltimore City Schools, like the rest of the city, the rest of the state, and the rest of the country, we too are working to make sure that we are doing our support, doing our best to support young people and families in the city of Baltimore during this time. So, let's see, it is working great. So, sorry, just wiping my lens a little bit. So, we have a PowerPoint that we think will help orient folks to what we have been engaged in. Sorry, I'm just pulling it up now. And do you have that PowerPoint, Council President?
I do not. I do not.
Okay. You should-
You can continue, I'll get it from your folks right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, just as a way of getting started, our response to the COVID-19 crisis actually, we began planning for it prior to the, okay, great, presentation is up now. Oh, wonderful, thank you. So, what you'll see in that first slide, if we could go to the second one, please? I don't know if it's Kaylin. Yes, that one, thank you very much. So, what you see here is a summary of Baltimore City Public Schools' actions to date. We just use this as a summary for you all to see that school closure was officially Thursday, March 12th, when the governor announced, by Monday, March 16th, when schools were officially closed, we convened, we commenced with our emergency meal sites, opened that first Monday, and academic packets were distributed at that time at schools. The real purpose was to take advantage of the professional development that teachers had experienced that previous Friday and make sure that there was some continuity of learning opportunity for all city school students. Spring break moved to March 23rd through 27th, so we moved the original time for spring break to that week as part of the initial, if folks remember, that initial first two weeks of the first round of the announced closure, staff used that time, both district, academic, and operations offices, one to move off-site operations, but also to really ramp up for what we were to learn. I think it was Wednesday, the 25th, there was confirmation that that time would in fact be extended, which we had all anticipated, but it was made public that Wednesday. That following week after official spring break, and I do want to point out that we had, that basically Central Office, most of my team did not have a spring break, many teachers worked through that, many school leaders. But officially, when we returned that following Monday from spring break, staff developed a long-term plan during that time for remote learning and technology distribution. On Monday, March 30th, that was a week ago today, we reopened meal sites, the meal sites were closed for that one week of spring break, we reopened the initial 18 meal sites, and we commenced PD, professional development for remote learning, to begin to prepare. And then that remote learning commenced for the first time today on April 6th. So, this is just kind of a summary to date of some of the kind of milestone actions, but we can move to the next slide. Great, thank you. What you'll see here on this slide in summary, really for those who, I'm sure everybody knows now, given where we are, Central Office operations moved fairly quickly to all who did not have duties that required work on-site, they are now working from home, work has been modified in that working remotely to also comply with social distancing. What you see here is a list of our essential functions. So, this is how we have identified our essential work, and even within many of these functions, what we have found is that even on-site, we have kind of lessened presence when possible, but this is a nice summary of what we are considering our key action and key focus areas. Next slide, please. What you'll see with regard to school-based staff, thank you, what you'll see that even with regards to school-based staff, now, most are working from home. Again, you'll see reference here to what I just recently referenced on the timeline with regards to professional development for teachers. April 6th was commencing today, our distance learning. And then, one of the things I think might be important for people to note is that with both spring break and professional development last week, today really commences-
A participant has joined the meeting.
Today really begins the phase, I would call almost Phase 2 or 3 of the work, where we have worked with teachers, principals, to establish expectations for reaching out to families, making sure that we have connection with students. Office of Human Capital is now, has worked very diligently to make sure that as many folks as possible who are part of the city schools team can work remotely. For those that don't and don't need to be in buildings every day, are out every day, we have worked very closely to make sure that those sites are taken care of and that we are remotely, I shouldn't say remotely, that we are alternating staff presence in buildings outside when possible. The next slide is focused primarily on the emergency meal sites. I want to thank our partners, city council, folks in the different divisions within the city. We have, as city schools, participated with the cross-functional team within the city to make sure that young people get fed. As noted, 18 emergency meal sites. When it says "to date," that was as of that kind of first round of feeding. We contributed, as you see here, close to 54,000 meals in service. What we have experienced as of today and even the beginning of last week when we returned from spring break was a significant daily uptick in the numbers of families being served and the numbers of meals that have been given out. We are, as you see here now, students and families can receive four take-home meals per visit. That was endorsed by the federal government. We had started giving out multiple meals before that because we wanted to make sure that young people and families had food. The other piece that you should note is that as of April 6th, as of Monday, we have moved all of our food distribution supports outdoors. Oh, okay, we lost a little bit, oh, there we go. Had moved outdoors to help enable social distancing for staff, my team, including the Chief of Staff, Allison Perkins-Cohen, who is also on this call for additional questions, if folks have it, really have done yeoman's work in looking at the standard operating procedures. As we worked very hard last week to make sure that we had some of our own nurses on-site for temperature checks, social distancing, and we have also worked with the city as well as some of our own reserves to provide PPE, personal protective equipment where possible. Still fall short of the ideal, but we really are trying to work diligently to make sure that our frontline folks are protected. Next, if you think about academics, we've referenced some of this, I've referenced some of this already. What you'll see here, and again, in our partnership with the city, we know that many of our families do not have access to Internet, and so really, our goal has been to provide as many opportunities as possible to support families with distance learning. So, we were very happy, our communications team is partnering with the city, so we are broadcasting lessons, daily lessons, on both City Schools TV, which is Comcast Channel 77, and we're partnering with Charm TV, which is Comcast Station 25 and 1025. You'll also see that these, this programming, this academic broadcasting of language is, excuse me, of lessons, sorry, is available at all times on our website. And we will continue again, because like many other urban areas, and I will say, even in the state of Maryland, my rural counterparts are also saying that they cannot back away from paper packets because we know that connectivity continues to be a challenge. You'll see on the next slide, just a sample of our broadcast schedule with City Schools TV and Comcast 77. So, that following slide, after the first one, as it's advancing, one of the things that you will see there is the schedule, what the schedule looks like for how that programming is being broadcast throughout the city. And as it's advancing, there we go. This is also, you should know, been coupled with robocalls that have gone out from our communications team and others, and we can advance to the next slide. What you see here is just an example of what that programming looks like based on subject area and grade level. The, as I noted before, we are a district, which you'll see, that has, you know, we clearly have had things like Google Classrooms and all that, but I will say, our teachers have done yeoman's work over the last week to really accelerate their own learning, and a number of our teachers who are already very comfortable with these platforms have been real leaders, real teacher leaders, in helping their colleagues come up to speed. And so, we are, we were able to reach, as you see here, 3,400 staff members, school-based staff members, last week on getting trained on Google Classroom, and we added in one week, 1,000 Google Classrooms across the city. You'll see here that we also launched a City Schools Homework and Technology Help Desk today, that will also be staffed by some of our other, shall we, our SPAR teachers, some of our support teachers, support staff, as well as our technology staff. So, we've done a lot of ramp up in a short period of time. I will say to the city council, to all of the councilmen and women who are here, as well as to the public, we know that we'll have some bumps, and we know that it won't go perfectly. We are iterating regularly, and so today, I think, all things considered, when I look at some other district launches, while clearly we have wrinkles to work through, we really had a good first day, and a lot of that is due to the work of the senior team, but really our principals, our school principals, and our teachers. Many of you may have noted, we did a, we conducted a survey, a technology and meal survey, which you'll see on that next slide, and what we did was we really reached out to as many families as possible, and what you'll see here, and we had an even larger spike today, we heard in our most recent COVID briefing, and again, I'm sure the slide is coming, but what you'll see is we had close to 9,000 families that actually participated in those responses, and because of that, what you'll see is we've been able to capture the needs of about just over 21,000 students, which is about 27% of our enrollment. So, the good news about this is it signals that we did have a, what is considered a robust first response to our survey, we're working to improve it. This will help guide where technology, as it comes and goes, but we are also very, very clear that this is only 27% of our enrollment, and so we, now that principals and teachers are back up to speed, we are really relying on our school-based folks to help get the information from our other families who are, who just don't have access or would not respond to this kind of survey, particularly some of our undocumented families, because we know, with good reason, they don't always trust official government outreach. When we think about technology, I will say that Baltimore is a school district like many that is part of the national conversation around equity and access to technology. That first bullet that describes the 15,000 Chromebooks in schools, one of the things that I have repeatedly said is that the district, at the time of the COVID-19 outbreak, had a ratio of about one device for every four students. Most were class sets of Chromebooks in the, and so what we have had to do, very quickly, we purchased cords for those Chromebooks, we're prioritizing juniors and seniors in high school for distribution of the additional Chromebooks. We purchased even as of last week, and I have to just say, major, major lift for our family and community engagement team, even our new chief legal officer, some of his connections really just, I can't say enough, when you've got the whole country trying to secure Chromebooks, the fact that we have purchased 12,000 new and refurbished Chromebooks that are scheduled to arrive sometime either late this week or over the next two weeks, it is, it's substantial. However, that number still falls short of a 1 to 1 ratio, and so, again, we are prioritizing at first high school juniors and seniors because they are closest to graduation, and we're, we've also, again, our family and community engagement team has done yeoman's work in really pressing on Comcast. And I will just take one quote that one Comcast representative said, and that is that you guys must be trying to keep us from making money, because we keep pressing on trying to expand the access for Baltimore City School students, and I have to say, Comcast could have shut it down earlier, and they have not. So, I think it works both ways. You will also see on the next slide, let's see, so we have, I'm sorry, I just got a quick note, that we got 5,000 of the Chromebooks actually arrived today, and the other seven, so we won't have to wait for next week, the other seven will be arriving in the next two or three days. So, that means by the end of this week, we will have 12,000 Chromebooks that we will begin preparing to distribute, actually earlier, a bit earlier than we thought. So, that's, that's actually very good news. I want to thank the Chief of Staff for texting me that mid-presentation. We will be, again, you just see on that technology distribution what I've said already, that we will be prioritizing high school juniors and seniors, but we will continue to distribute paper packets, because quite frankly, for a number of our families, that is still going to be their primary connection as we work to access technology as quickly as possible. There clearly are budget implications of that, but for right now, we are very pleased with our initial efforts. A lot of topics that are on everyone's mind, I had a chance to have a conversation, be part of a conversation with four or five student leaders across the city who were, as we all know, just amazing young people, and said, "How can we help? What should we be doing?" And one of the things that we know are, is that graduation, other senior activities are first and foremost, rightly so, on a lot of young people's minds, and so we are working very closely with MSD and other LEAs. I got off of another phone call with my colleague's superintendents across the state, and we are working very, very closely with one another to make sure that all of our grading and graduation considerations are sound, and we are also working, I've actually charged some of the young people to help us come up with what I would call kind of Phase 1 of possible graduation activities in the event that we go past April 24th, and clearly, I do not make that call, I just want to reinforce that, I do not make that call. The state superintendent does, but we are operating as if that will probably be the case, and so we need to be prepared for that to be the case, and we are, I will say, we have finalized the approach for third-quarter grades, we are still looking at fourth-quarter grades, and particularly graduation requirements for seniors. My commitment is that as much as possible, we are, we don't want young people hurt, yeah, we don't want their grades hurt because of something that is way beyond their control. And so, we are operating, and I would say, this cuts across school districts, which is actually very encouraging, that even some of our well-resourced school districts, they too are mindful of equity issues, and so we are discussing things like, you know, pass and incomplete, and what does it look like if you, you know, turn in some of the work, what does it look like just to participate, what could extended portions of that look like? But the real commitment is that we don't want young people unnecessarily burdened with grades that only reflect their, or primarily reflect their access to, you know, to resources as opposed to their, you know, actually going to school and judging their work. So, as that becomes clearer, we will let you know. And the last slide really is just a summation of that, so I will stop and see if there are any other questions. So, here, that last slide really is just a list of the resources, like work line and other things. So, I will turn it back over to you, Council President Scott.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Santalisis. I'll ask that the council members, if they have questions for you, they will follow up with you. Thank you, thank you for the ways thinking about our young people and continue to be a great leader in this tough crisis that's very difficult for all of us. So, thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, roll call. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Members, please respond with an aye or with present to denote your presence. President Scott.
Here.
Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray.
Present.
Councilman Dorsey.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Present.
Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Schleifer is called in, we may need to unmute one of the callers. We'll come back to you, Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Pinkett.
Present.
Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
Councilman Burnett.
Aye.
Councilman Reisinger. Number four, caller number four is Councilman Reisinger. You can unmute number four, please. We'll come back. Councilman Costello.
You forgot Middleton.
All right, Councilwoman Middleton. Right front.
Middleton, here.
Thank you, Councilman.
Costello, here.
Councilman. Let's try that again, Councilman. Unmute number 10, please, I mean, excuse me, number eight, please. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum. I believe that Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Reisinger, and Councilman Stokes are also all present. I believe that we just need to double-check with them. Councilman Reisinger.
White sugar, here.
Reisinger's here.
Councilman Stokes is here.
Thank you, sir, and Councilman Schleifer.
Councilman Stokes is here.
We have you, Councilman.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have to disconnect the other connecting if you have, Councilman. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the March 9th, 2020 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
With our objection, the journal will be adopted. The bills of the mayor can be found on page 2 of your agenda, executive nomination.
EA 20-0260, Ms. Davis, Member, Commission on Disabilities.
This nomination has been withdrawn.
EA 20 dash 0261, Kimberly Gray, member, Commission on Disabilities, District Four.
This nomination has been withdrawn.
EA 20 dash 0262, David Greenberg, member, Commission on Disabilities, District Five.
This nomination had been withdrawn.
EA 20 dash 0263, Michael King, member on Disabilities, District Two.
This nomination has been withdrawn.
EA 20 dash 0264, Adam Levine, member on Disabilities, District 14.
This nomination has been withdrawn.
EA 20 dash 0265, Yohinde Paxton, member on Disabilities, District 12.
This nomination has been withdrawn.
EA 20 dash 0266, Eric Stevenson, member, Planning Commission, District Nine.
This nomination has been withdrawn.
EA 20 dash 0267, R. H. Sampson, member, Board of Ethics, District Five.
This nomination has been withdrawn. A bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 20 dash.
Sorry, point of order, Mr. Council President.
Chair recognizes Council Dorsey.
Thank you. Can you speak to the reason for the withdrawal? I believe it's for technical purposes, but so that others are aware.
Yes, it is to our knowledge for technical purposes. And these will be resubmitted at the appropriate time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Deals to be introduced.
City Council Bill 20 dash 0510, Trauma Informed Care Task Force Composition, revisions and clarifications for the purpose of adding two educators with experience within the Baltimore City Public School System to the Trauma Informed Care Task Force, clarifying that one council member appointed to the task force has substantial experience as an educator with the Baltimore City Public School System, clarifying that one council member appointed to the task force, says it twice, has substantial experience as a parent with the Baltimore City Public School System, clarifying that appointed, that the appointed council member with substantial experience as an educator shall be co-chair of the task force, conforming and correcting related provisions and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Cohen, Clark, Henry.
Please add Council President Scott as a co-sponsor. Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor. Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Councilwoman, raise your hand and speak. Councilwoman Burnett as a co-sponsor.
Middleton.
Councilwoman, Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor. Councilman Bullock as a, well, Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. We know that in normal times, our city experiences a high degree of trauma. But all the more so as we go through and then come out of the Corona crisis that we're now in. We know that our students, our families, our seniors, there is going to be a serious toll, not just on folks' physical health, but on their mental health as well. And in conversations with educators, we know that they see trauma firsthand every day in the classroom. And so we felt it very appropriate to make sure their voices were represented. While we do have school, city schools leadership included already, we wanted to make sure we explicitly recognized teachers within our task force. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Bill 20 dash 0511, Sale of Property, Former Bed of Cromwell Street. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain parcels of land known as the former bed of Cromwell Street, no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Costello.
Chair recognizes, thanks to Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill is for a sale of property for essentially a land swap in seven or eight different places on Cromwell Street in Fort Covington. So essentially, as part of this, the city will be made whole as the road is essentially geographically shifted a number of feet. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20 dash 0512, Rezoning, 1301 East Fort Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1301 East Fort Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the I-1 zoning district to the R-8 zoning district and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Costello.
And this is Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a rezoning to facilitate the development of approximately 120 row homes at the current site of a chemical plant directly across the street from Francis Scott Key Elementary Middle School in the Locust Point neighborhood. The developer has been in active discussions and negotiations with the neighborhood association. And I expect them to reach agreement in short order. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20 dash 0513, Health Emergencies.
A participant has left the meeting.
For the purpose of requiring the Health Commissioner during the pendency of a declared health emergency, he published certain aggregate data on the city's website regarding Baltimore City residents diagnosed with an infectious, infectious disease, requiring that the published data be disaggregated by race, gender, age, and zip code, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, President Scott, Costello, Clark, Burnett, Middleton, Pinkett, Henry, Stokes, Reisinger, Bullock, McCray, Clark.
Yes, please.
Please add Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. Thank you, thank you to all of my colleagues. We know that we are in the midst of this COVID-19 pandemic. And we know that in Baltimore, a city where your zip code and your race can determine your health, determine how long you live and how you're more likely to be impacted with asthma, lead paint exposure. When we're dealing with a public health crisis like this, it is irresponsible for any government entity to not understand how this is going to impact its residents of all kind of data, especially in Baltimore City where we are now telling everyone that equity and racial equity is the law of the land. We have to be able to have this data aggregated in this way so that we can make sure that we are attacking this virus, understanding how it's going to impact our poor black neighborhoods, our poor Hispanic neighborhoods, certain zip codes in the city, women versus men. We're going to press our health department to do this so that we can make sure that we're handling this COVID-19 pandemic in the most way, in the most optimal way. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for signing on. And I look forward to having a great discussion about this bill. This has been assigned to the Health Committee. We will now move on to resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 20 dash 0207R, City Council Seeks City Appeal to Preserve Baltimore's Clean Air Act. For the purpose of formally requesting that the Baltimore City Law Department appeal the March 27th, 2020 decision of the U.S. District Court with the District of Maryland regarding Baltimore's Clean Air Act. Sponsors, Reisinger, Clark, President Scott, Burnett, Bullock, Cohen, Dorsey, Henry, Middleton, Sneed, Pinkett, Stokes.
Well, thank you. Thank you to all my council colleagues. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark, or Councilman Reising.
Councilman Reising.
Yeah, Councilman Reising.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Okay. Mr. President and members of the council, on March 27th, a federal judge ruled against the Clean Air Act. That was, that was passed unanimously by the city council and signed in law by the mayor. The judge made a bad call. The judge addressed the technical matter, whether we, the council, had the authority to reduce the toxic output, but also to measure that output. Mr. President and my colleagues, this is a public health issue where all communities have the right to breathe clean air. Mr. President, I request that the law department appeal the March 27th decision. And I make a motion to suspend the rules for media adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
All right. The motion is approved. The ayes have it, the resolution has been adopted. I want to go back to City Council Bill 200513 and please add Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor as well.
Um, point, I have a point, what do I want?
Point of order, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
It is exactly, wait a minute. Sorry about. Point of order, literally, is this where I may proceed to, to get to the zero waste resolution and get it on the agenda?
Not yet, Councilwoman, not yet. We'll continue in a few seconds.
Okay, let me know when. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young.
City Council Resolution 20 dash 0280R, COVID-19 Update. For the purpose of updating Baltimore City residents on the state of the COVID-19 pandemic and outlining the city council's recommendations going forward. Sponsors, President Scott, Burnett, Middleton, Pinkett, Stokes, Sneed, Reisinger, Bullock, Henry, Clark.
Thank you. A thank you to, please add Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. Thank you. Listen, we all know again that amidst this COVID-19 crisis, there is an impact that is wide ranging on every single individual within the city of Baltimore. Every business, there is no person that's not being drastically impacted by COVID-19. This resolution simply asks our state government, our federal government, others to think even further about the great work that has been done to protect people from mortgages, to protect folks who are paying rent, to understanding the deep, the deep despair that this is causing for people across the board, thinking about how we're doing, testing everything that we understand with COVID-19. We have to press a little further. And that's why we're introducing this, this resolution and going to be asking for immediate adoption. So put on record how the city council thinks we should be outlining in moving forward, recommendations for dealing with COVID-19. So thank you to all of my, my co-sponsors. And Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I obviously, I'll, I'll wait to provide just general updates from the Joint Information Center later on the agenda. But I did want to suspend the necessary rules for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Yes, without objection, the rules will be suspended. Rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott. Councilman Cohen.
Aye.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. The ayes have it, the motion is approved, the resolution has been adopted. Consent calendar, you will find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. We will now move to the second reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the, of the hearing.
I object.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
I said yes.
All right, Councilman Schleifer.
No.
Councilman, Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
The ayes have it, we will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Is my moment here? Zero waste, okay. I'm very, I'm very excited. I have a script from the president's office and I'm going to try to do it well. Mr. President, I have, I move to petition Resolution 20 dash 202R, Baltimore Fair Development Plan for Zero Waste from Committee.
All those in favor of petitioning Resolution 200202R from committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The clerk will read the bill.
City Council Resolution 20 dash 0202R, Baltimore Fair Development Plan for Zero Waste.
Has left the meeting.
Chair recognizes that Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to suspend the rules to allow for immediate adoption of this resolution. And I will take a moment before I make the next motion to just talk for a moment about what we're doing here.
All right, without objection, without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council, if I may. We have all been working together for three years now to move us toward zero waste. We were going to have a hearing on, on the whole plan that has been encompassed in this resolution. But many, many things have, have delayed and have meant that we, we need to act now. And the reason we need to act now to approve this plan for zero waste for Baltimore is that, first of all, we've got a court case coming and we got to win it. And we need all the environmentalists lined up and active and knowing that this city has approved the zero waste plan. And that includes the kind of clean air that our appeal is all about. Secondly, with the economy in such straits right now, we have a crucial time now to begin to make sure that when we, when we recover, that we begin the new kind of zero waste, waste handling that we have envisioned for so many years. So we need to have this approved so that this, these organizations and advocates can go forward. And they can say, we have the good housekeeping seal of approval of the city of Baltimore. And if I may, for just a moment, I would like to read in honor of, making a motion, the, it's called Free Your Voice Anthem of Curtis Bay's Audrey and Sheila Rosier. It's only four lines. Here's what they wrote. It's time to stand up, let our voices be heard. Incinerator, move because you're not preferred. It's about that time to make the choice. I must stand up and free my voice. Amen. Move to approve this resolution.
All right, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 20 dash 0202R, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The resolution is adopted. Third reader for final passage.
Thank you.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0311, Nicotine Replacement Therapy Products Sale and Distribution. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. City Council Bill 19 dash 0380, Charter Amendment, Veto. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
No.
Please note, Councilman Costello as a no, this bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19 dash. City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four five one Bimeal Comprehensive Crime Reduction Plan. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four six two Zoning: Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variance twenty-one twelve St. Paul Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four six seven Charter Amendment Vetoes: Timing of Override. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
No.
Please note, Councilman Costello is a no. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four seven three Zoning: Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, variances, seventeen fifty-eight Park Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four eight zero Zoning: Use Standards Neighborhood Commercial Establishment. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Uh, bill's withdrawn. Please note that the following bill read by the clerk has been withdrawn.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four six zero Subsequent Change in Conditional Use Clarification.
All right. Committee announcements, uh, committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett. No?
Uh, anything? Um, we, we are working to schedule an update with the Health Department on COVID nineteen, um, but we don't have a date just yet. It'll be announced very soon enough.
All right. Committee announcements, committee announcements. No, no one? Thank you. Regular announcements. I'm going to start off by, uh, wishing, uh, even though I called them on the phone, wishing Councilman Reisinger a happy birthday last week. Uh, we delivered a gift to him in a socially distancing way, so, uh, healthy, happy birthday to Councilman, Councilman Reisinger. Start off there with regular announcements. Also want to, as all peace ask, uh, Council Vice President Middleton to honor in moment of silence for the now seventy-three victims of homicide that we've lost in Baltimore, those that we've lost to the COVID nineteen virus as well, in addition to those that we continue to lose to the overdose, overdose crisis in Baltimore City. Also want to take a moment to talk directly again to the citizens and thank every, every single member of the city council for representing their districts throughout this crisis, making sure that their districts have the latest information. A special, special thanks and shout out to Councilman Chris Burnett, who was assigned to the Joint Information Center on behalf of the council, and has done an excellent job of making sure that all of us, not just me, but the entire council is kept to date with the latest information. And to the citizens of Baltimore, we have to understand again that this COVID nineteen crisis is very, very real. We have to take this seriously at every turn because we must understand that this is something where people, people are going to pass away, and more people can do, not have to do that if we are practicing social distancing, if we are adhering to the advice of public health professionals at every turn. I say this over and over again. Listen to the public health professionals. Listen to the information coming from our, our health commissioner. Listen to the information coming from your council people. We know that we have to consistently, uh, hear the best and latest information so that we can understand what we should be doing. And there are things that we know, uh, we can't have people doing. We cannot, listen, we consistently are still seeing this, unfortunately. We should not have people out, uh, on playgrounds or in basketball courts. We cannot have people having parties at their house. We can, this stuff is unacceptable for anyone to be doing right now. We need everybody to be safe at all times. You should not be getting your hair cut by someone coming to your house for your hair done. We're going to have to maintain that ourselves throughout this crisis. Listen to the advice of public health professionals so that we can make it through this together. Baltimore is a city that cannot be broken. We know we can't be broken. We will make it through this together by adhering to the advice of public health professionals. And I'm just going to go down the line for, uh, general announcements for the rest of my colleagues. Councilman Cohen?
No, thank you.
All right. Councilwoman McCray?
No, thank you.
Councilman Dorsey?
All good, Mr. President. I do want to second you in, in thanking Councilman Burnett for his outstanding work, uh, as our point of contact on the J I C. Um, I just cannot stress enough how responsive he has been to every single, uh, question that I have brought to him, uh, for that team. Just such a quick turnaround and just really being on top of things, and, um, thank you. A yeoman's job, as Dr. Sanz Delisa said.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Councilman Henry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for a moment of silence for, uh, one of our community leaders, uh, was lost last week. Malik Mosley had been the president of the Lock Raven Improvement Association for at least fifteen years that I know of, um, uh, passed away, uh, on February the twenty-eighth, and, um, and he will be missed, and I'd appreciate a moment of silence.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I cut my teeth in city government going to, uh, Lock Raven meetings and, and working with Mr. Mosley. He's a great, great man. He will be missed. Uh, we'll come to you, Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, I'd like to request a moment of silence, uh, for Mr. Josh Lewis, who is a local business owner, who was hit by a stolen car in my district a handful of weeks ago and just passed away this week from it.
Thank you. The council vice president will go last. Uh, Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to say that there've been a lot of heroes out there during this crisis, but I wanted to, uh, to write a highlight to Jeffrey Griffin and the Franciscan Center of Baltimore for how they, um, have stepped up to the plate and served the entire city. It's been incredible, the work that they've been doing.
Thank you. In, in the vein, let me, let me also thank every one of our frontline employees in the city of Baltimore, our DPW workers who are still picking up our trash, the folks that are cleaning our buildings, our housing folks that are still working, our police and fire people, all of these individuals who are literally risking, uh, their health, their safety, their lives in order for us to keep moving on with some sense of a normal life in the city of Baltimore and for us to be safe. So thank you to each and every one of them. Uh, Councilman Burnett, anything else, sir?
Hey, everybody. Um, thank you all for the feedback, and I, I just want to extend, um, you know, that those same kudos to all of the members of the Emergency Operations Center and the Joint Information Team, uh, who've been working around the clock to coordinate information getting out as well as the city's response. Uh, folks are working tirelessly to, uh, address this very serious pandemic in our city and, and, and a lot of staff. Uh, I'm happy to work with all of you, obviously, uh, but there's a whole bunch of people behind me and, and working with me as well to make all of this, all is possible and to be as responsive as we can, but I definitely appreciate the feedback, and we'll definitely give that to them as well. Um, one thing, while we do have the public on the line and watching this, I do not want to miss an opportunity to direct people to the city's central website, coronavirus.baltimorecity.gov. It has all of the latest information on the number of cases which currently sit at four hundred and thirty-five, as well as information on food pickup in multiple languages. There are infographics that we need people to share, information on symptoms, how to get help, how to volunteer. Uh, we've tried to compile as much information as possible, uh, and on that space and want to just push people to it, uh, in case they have any questions. Um, with that, that's all I have. Um, you know, I think we will get through this together. It's very difficult for all of us across the city, but, uh, all of us, I know, are working incredibly hard to, to, um, you know, get out of this situation as quickly as we can, but just making sure that people stay home, wash their hands, social distance, uh, and make sure that your neighbors are doing the same thing. Thank you all.
Councilman Bullock?
Uh, nothing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reisinger, anything else, sir?
No, thank you.
Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to take an opportunity just to remind people about park rules. The rules include no gatherings of ten or more people, staying at least six feet apart from anyone who does not live in a household at all times when you're in a park and just in general. Basketball, tennis, and bocce courts are closed. Playgrounds are closed, which includes swings. Park installed fitness and exercise equipment is closed. Pavilions are closed, and dog parks have limitations, most of them of no more than five people at any one time inside them. Um, the complaints continue to come in of people violating these rules. These rules are in place for the benefit of everyone. They are not intended to target any one demographic, whether it's gender, age, or race in our city. It is infuriating that people continue to break these rules and continue to not practice social distancing within our parks. I'm going to ask Director Moore tonight to remove all the swings, as we had to have basketball rims and tennis nets removed last week because people simply could not follow the rules. This is symptomatic, meaning that you can have, uh, the virus and not know it. You can go to a park, touch a piece of equipment, and then when someone else comes and touches that piece of equipment who does not have the virus, they can contract the virus. This is extremely real. I, I cannot stress how real this thing is. In Maryland alone, today, we have had four hundred and thirty-six new cases and twenty-four deaths. We're at least two weeks away from this thing peaking, and our hospital systems could potentially be completely overburdened and overrun by this. We have got to get the message out to people that it is not okay to continue to engage this behavior, which is hurting every single person in the city. Mr. President and colleagues, I'm asking all of you, as I know you all have been doing, to continue to communicate that message to your communities that you represent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes?
Yes, um, first of all, I want to thank, um, Franciscan Center for their, um, yo and, um, work. They fed eight senior buildings in my district in Michelle Featon. I want to thank Luke from Baltimore City Burger King and Donald's on Broadway fed all the DPW and the sanitation workers lunch for the whole day, and they've just been extraordinary. The Marriott, the, um, the Marriott at Radisson Inn over Wolf Street fed Eastern District and Northern District Police Station, uh, lunch. So I want to just, you know, put it out there and say thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes, thank you. And I, I agree with all of our colleagues for thinking all the people that are on the front line and is working really hard in the communities, but I want to make sure that we add the fifteen thousand people, um, that are in Baltimore cities who lost their job, who filed for unemployment, um, who are really going through a hard time, and I just also want to acknowledge the people all throughout the country who are going through a hard time as well. Um, I have not spoken to anyone who has not been impacted by what has happened, and so by this, I want to make sure that all of our leaders in Baltimore City, that we continue to just do the hard work, um, to stand with the people and the residents of Baltimore City, um, and that we also show compassion, and we work with any entity or organization who is willing to, um, kind of slow the burden down for some of our families here. So, uh, just thank you again for the people that's on the front line and to our volunteers that are in the communities that are really doing the hard work, that are trying to keep people encouraged and connected. We, we as Baltimore leaders stand with you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, anything else? Councilwoman, you're still muted. You have to unmute yourself.
The council, I know. Can you hear me? Uh, I just want, I just want to say how proud I am of the communities in this city and the way they found and formed partnerships and found ways to obey all the rules of this virus, still help their neighbors. It's been amazing to watch. Special thanks, me too, Councilman Burnett, and I just want to shout out to my constituents. That's the Chris Burnett I keep telling you that I'm working with at the top of all this help that we're getting. And finally, um, for my colleague, um, talking about the removal of basketball nets and the rest, I understand, and all I want to say is.
A participant has left the meeting.
Wear masks. I can't get it out again. Masks!
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you so much. And before we, I recognize the vice president, uh, the parliamentarian has literally moved the effort back to Councilwoman Clark's resolutions, so we have a roll call vote. Resolution twenty, twenty, uh, twenty oh two oh two R. Uh, clerk will call a roll.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen? I'm going to record you as an aye, Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
I'm sorry. Point of order, what are we voting on?
Twenty dash, two, twenty dash zero two zero two R. We have to do a roll call.
The zero.
Never wait, um, Councilman goes.
Excuse me?
Never waste is what we have to, the parliamentarian said we have to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
Yes.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
All right. Uh, the resolution is adopted. Uh, Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The next council meeting will be held on Monday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty, at five P M. May we have a moment of silence for the families and friends that have lost loved ones in the COVID nineteen? Uh, may we also have a moment of silence for the now seventy-three victims of homicide? Uh, and also, uh, we still have a continued opioid epidemic. May we have a moment of silence for them? And also, uh, Mr. Malik Mosley and Josh Lewis? And, um, to everyone, as we continue to be strong and wear our mask and our gloves and keep our distance, um, we, the strength that this city has will show through this pandemic. Um, may we also keep prayers and have a moment of silence for our first responders, our healthcare workers, our DPW workers, and all the people that continue to take a risk and feed, um, um, you know, just continue to put out food for, uh, people, especially in our disadvantaged and impoverished neighborhoods, and just keep in mind that we are all in this together, and we will definitely get through it. Thank you. I'm done. Hello?
We heard you. Yes.
Thank you. There being no more further business, this concludes. Have left the meeting. In turn of the Baltimore City Council.